Under leagimes to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Nathan got up.
I did.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Motion.
Second?
In a second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carried.
I'll even make the motion to approve the minutes from June eleventh.
Here we have the motion.
No second.
In a second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carried. General public concerns, good today, Nathan?
Good today.
Anybody else? I think we made it through that part. I don't even know how much time we're just gonna go right to drainage, is it thirty-five the way it looks?
We'll move to the drainage.
We have a motion.
I'll second the move.
In a second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign, we'll see you in a little bit.
News for your information, Sandy, we have regular business meeting and we go to drainage, we have to discuss drainage. That's the reason we were...
Yeah, it's a process you go through, you gotta leave supervisors and go on to drainage.
Some, we act as commissioners for drainage districts in this county. Some counties have township commissioners do it, but we got the job here, so we have to go into different coordination.
If we didn't have that drainage job, our job would take about a half hour.
Meet once a month, fifteen minutes.
Is there anybody that we could hand this off to?
Can't, no one will take it, and if they did, you couldn't afford to pay them, so... Come on, Chris, glad you made it up.
Morning. How are you?
Okay. Mr. County is on the line for us to pick up, and the lead for setting a levy. Here's their sheet.
Who's the president, or is it Campbell or Chairman or...
I don't know who the Chairman is on there right now.
All right, you guys ready?
Do you get Mark's Chairman?
I think so.
We'll find out.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. We have a... We're all here.
All right, uh, we can all press the next question to the repack later.
Okay. Is this, uh, is this Mark talking?
Yes.
Okay, well, this is first, I'm the Chairman up here, so...
Good, good morning, can you hear me on, uh, going, you want us to start yet?
Go ahead.
All right. We will call, being in order of the drainage district, number three, Webster, two, Humboldt, two forty-seven, Webster seven, Humboldt eight, lateral two ninety-five, and lateral one, uh, in DD thirty-four, all present in Humboldt, um, all of the exceptional supervisors, Webster and Webster, this is our side on the agenda, this is upon the Chairman and Secretary. I'll make a motion to appoint the Chairman and Secretary.
I'll second that, Rick Peterson.
All in favor?
Aye.
All eyes here?
All eyes here.
All right, next item on the agenda is to approve assessment.
Okay, sure, uh, get your three on six, Humboldt, uh, the assessments are, uh, what was done with the screen cost, uh, so we need a total of five thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars and thirty-three cents to cover future costs and that budget, uh, leaving four point five one eight six percent. So, two forty-seven, Webster seven, Humboldt, with, uh, the cost of the screen and, uh, Beaver Down removal, with, uh, some future maintenance, with a total of thirteen thousand three hundred twenty dollars and thirty-eight cents, leaving a present of four point four one four eight. Two forty-seven, Webster, uh, seven, Humboldt, lateral two ninety-five, this is all of Webster County, uh, the screen cost with future maintenance, leaving five point two two five two percent, with a total of seven hundred eighty dollars and seventy-eight cents. And two forty-seven, Webster seven, Humboldt, lateral one, is for screen and appearing book and cover, leaving four point two one five four percent, with a total of six thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars and seven cents. And that is in Webster County only as well.
Any questions on your vote of steel?
No.
No?
None here?
None here, I would ask for a motion to approve assessment. I'll make the motion to approve the assessment.
I'll... I'll second the motion, Rick Peterson.
Rick Peterson seconds it up here.
Your motion I know, I second by Peterson, any questions or comments? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
All eyes here?
All eyes here.
On the security, any other business gentleman? We are good, most new here.
Second.
My motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are here, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you.
You too.
I'm moving to the drainage.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, thirty-five, yes.
What do you think of Carl?
I'm trying.
Rick standing out here just waiting to come in. Just for an half while, I had a, a, uh, moment the other day, I, it was raining, so I went to get my wife's paper, you know, being the nice guy, and I kept my glasses on the hood of my pickup, and you know I'm not wearing my glasses, so...
Now we know why.
I rode, drove down the gravel road, and I get up to the highway, and I'm thinking, where the hell are my glasses? They're in the hood, so I start back and forth in the gravel road, pretty soon I see something out on the road, and I went, squashed, somebody ran over my glasses, so bifocals, I think that was the piece that I found that was left, so... I'm looking at this, if I can get it far enough away, I can see numbers, but...
I got a similar story, I put my cellphone in my golf cart and headed for the golf course, last night, I was on the highway, brought to my house.
Still working.
Still working.
Yeah, really lucky.
Three hundred dollars later for glasses.
They'll probably get me a fine for them.
So, anyway, Rick, what you got?
Uh, the agenda item is, uh, DD thirty-five, branch C, um, the contractor thought he was gonna get in here early this spring and be done with this project, uh, we all know what happened to this project, um, and then he went to another project, so it's not gonna be till probably at least the end of next month before he's in there. There has been significant expense incurred, there's done a pay estimate to pay for materials on site, there's been all the engineering to this point, uh, there'd be some interest, um, the question came up as far as the possibility of doing a levy now to clean up what is there for expenses to minimize the interest, so I think that's how it was written up on the agenda.
Yeah, what was the total cost of this project, projected cost?
Oh, I should've looked, and I didn't.
You guys probably know that, don't you?
The contractor was what, seven twenty, a little over seven hundred and twenty thousand plus engineering and...
Yeah, so it's...
Well, you have a partial cost then, to date.
Did you get a chance to talk to Jenna? Or you just, do you wanna just do like a fifty percent levy on the project, or what are you thinking?
Yeah, or did you have particular amount in mind?
Yeah, there's means to do that, that, that would help the interest even more.
Sure, 'cause you're, you're paying more, so there's less interest moving forward. How did the landowners feel about that, Harlock? What if we did approximate fifty percent of the total approximate cost, levied this levy?
And then when the project's done, levy would balance.
Balance would be roughly fifty percent, so you're paying half in this levy and half in next year's levy.
Well, I guess my question would ask, Rick, was, you know, you're gonna charge this interest before we get a chance to even pay it on the bill.
Right.
I guess that, I don't know how many you guys would buy something, not get charged interest before you have a chance to pay the bill.
Or even have it home.
Right, yeah, don't even have the piece of equipment.
So, I guess that's what the question is, could we put into the fund, or however you do it, uh, to stop the interest, or have the opportunity?
I think the quick answer is yes.
Yes, if we do a partial levy this year, and the final levy this year. This was reclassified more paperwork for Trish. Yeah. But at least it's not a huge area, for one thing.
Yeah, it's not a lot of landowners.
Yeah, this was reclassified in two thousand and four, and the branch is separate already. We will be doing a new reclass before the second half of this would be due, uh, but, um, this is apparently new reclass already, and the branch is already separate, so you could use that to do the levy, rather than...
So you wanted to do any of that either?
Right.
Is that gonna mean when I do the levy for the second half, or whatever, yeah, the second part?
Yeah.
That I'll have to do an adjustment for the first?
No, no, they'll, you'll levy the first, and that'll be what their levy is for each property.
But you're saying there's gonna be a reclassification before the completion of the project?
It'd be mandatory for us to do that, it's gonna be very similar.
But you don't think it's gonna change much?
No, I'd be shocked if it did.
Okay.
That would allow you to take care of it just right away here, as far as levy.
We're not coming up with something out of thin air on fifty percent, but...
No.
That's what Rick said what was, uh, you know, estimated cost, you take that estimated cost about half of that for this, this...
And we can look back at the preliminary engineering report for what we had for numbers, to come up with the half.
And that obviously would stop more interest.
Stop the interest, oh, yeah, help the interest even more.
An extra...
What percentage of the pipe do they have delivered, you sure gonna pay for pipe that they don't have?
Oh, no, no, no.
No.
You paid for what's on site.
On site, yeah.
And this won't change that.
Is it ten percent, is it?
Uh, probably ten, ten to fifteen percent.
Yeah, this money won't come in until September anyway.
Right.
We'll levy this fall.
Right.
And hopefully by then he'll be working.
Digging.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, done hopefully, but it won't be finalized out probably yet, so...
So, landowner wise?
I'm over at least fifty percent, whatever you put.
Yeah.
You could go more than that, as far as I'm concerned, but...
Been here until seventy-five, for all I care.
Fifty at least, I would say.
Fifty would help because that would clean up everything, and, and we're not gonna have much there for bills for you until he gets at work.
Right.
And a couple of months later, it should be done.
And then we should be able to balance the levy next March.
There you go.
Get it balanced out.
Yes. All right, I'll make the motion.
Make the motion then, for fifty?
Fifty percent levy on the partial assessment.
Second that motion.
On the branch C of DD thirty-five.
So we have a motion to levy fifty percent on DD thirty-five, branch C, in a second. Any other discussion?
I would, uh...
I think.
I was just gonna say, I would ask that we get a number that, what is, the fifty percent of what number?
Yeah.
I mean...
Yes.
So that we, whatever that number is.
What we'll probably do is take the preliminary engineering report, use the bid price instead of my estimated construction cost.
Okay.
More actual cost.
Yeah, more actual, and then, plus the other costs that we had figured, um, the right-of-way engineering, uh, we, we had interest in there, we'll look at whether that number's realistic, um, with this being, stop slowing the interest accumulation down.
You should have a real close number.
Real close, yeah.
And then that number will we give into the landowners?
Yeah, we could, yeah, that'd be, we can do that, um, yeah, Trish and I'll work through that.
Well, it isn't like we're, we're only gonna make a few phone calls, so...
True.
So you know what the, we all know what is fifty percent of what number, but that's a good...
One question, when will the state portion from UZI to the, to the account, could sink well?
As soon as I submit a bill.
Soon as she submits a bill.
But now that we have a payment, or a pay request for that, for the contractor, I'll go ahead and do that.
So she'll be submitting a bill shortly to, to get the money that you were eligible for to date.
Because I can sort of activate till the last one, and the more we get paid this time, the less we'll have the next time, but...
Well, and that, when you get that money, it'll be applied to debt, right?
The account right away.
Yeah, so as soon as she gets money from the state, she'll apply it to the account, so that'll help.
Because far as I'm concerned, you can make it, you know, not file for it till it's done, and then it'd be just a one-time thing.
Would reduce the interest, I think.
Yeah, there, there's gonna be, what, sixty thousand, or I don't remember what the...
It would, um...
In engineering today, right?
The pay, the whole total's probably about ninety thousand right now.
As long as they don't, they turn our part.
Roughly, maybe a little less.
That's why I was getting, we think fifty percent, then they have that on.
Yeah, yeah, there's gonna be about ninety thousand though, we'll get back from the state here after it's filed.
Well, it'll be a percentage of that.
Oh, yeah, percent, yeah, three fourths of that.
Three fourths.
Well, the total will be about ninety thousand, but you'll get the states...
We went with a full inch, they only paid towards the half inch, because they'll take off on that.
I know, but I thought it was a hundred and thirty thousand, I was to take the other option.
This is just, we submit them in increments, the, um, request to IDAL.
Yeah, as the project goes along, she can apply periodically to get the money, so, and all of it, that's just part of what you're getting.
And the progress will...
But as Dial suggested, and I, I go along with that, couldn't we, as landowners, pay the fifty percent, and then we put that towards the, the rest of it, you know, the ninety thousand?
The levy will be for fifty percent of the projected cost, right?
Total.
Right, okay.
Right, I think you're probably on to that, I think pretty much how it's gonna work is, you're gonna pay this in this false levy, the fifty percent of the total cost, and then, yes, the, uh, balance will be less because of the IDAL money you put in the account. So, yes, you will have less, and that's all good, because what we're trying to do is keep the interest very, very minimal. Yeah, everybody, you know...
She's gonna get the folder, get the number.
I think we're on the right track with that.
My, my comment was on some of these huge projects that we run, maybe we should consider doing this as a standard practice. When we bid the job, we levy fifty percent of it upfront, spread it over a couple of years for the landowners, it'd be beneficial to them, beneficial to us, because we pay less interest, it's a little more work for Trish, but...
Shouldn't be terrible, because...
The amount of money we save would be, it's well worth it, yes.
Well, it's the landowners that are saving it, so you guys are setting a good precedent.
Yes.
And, 'cause it, the, like Rick said, the big projects, you just don't do them in a month.
No, they, they take a while to get done, and it's a lot of...
The procedural part of getting it done is, takes as long as the project, and once you get the...
Once you get the bids let, you know what it's roughly gonna cost, it's pretty damn close.
I don't think your number will be too far off when you go through your figuring.
No, I don't think so either.
At this point.
Right.
I agree with you.
I think it'd be a hassle to everybody involved.
Wouldn't that? Well, there again, you're taking a do, you're taking a dollar figure and sending out the levy, so that shouldn't be that, you know, yeah, it's something you have to do, you have to do, yeah, you have to do it.
Double mailing, so you have that added cost of mailing, but that's minimal to the interest cost.
Oh, absolutely, there.
I agree.
I know Winnebago County at least does the, the bill as they go along.
Do they?
Yeah, they'll, they'll be, if they've accumulated some debt, they'll go ahead and then levy, even though the project isn't done, so...
Like this is a better method, though, it's kind of, yeah, upfront earlier, and then completion, I can't see doing it as you're going along, how many, you know, like, they only levy, can levy twice a year.
Yeah.
So...
Well, but you can do a levy anytime, that's what Winnebago thinks, so...
So they keep sending out...
It's a crazy thing, drainage, my gosh, every, every...
Yeah.
Everybody has a different interpretation of the law.
Yeah, I think it'd be, that'd be a little overkill, if you're levying every little month.
They do it all the time, they do it more like every six months.
Yeah.
Yeah, but even though a project isn't done in the first six-month period, they'll go ahead and levy it, or...
Or just kind of essentially what we're doing.
Yeah, yes.
Anything else while you, while we're waiting on her, that you got going on, Rick, that you...
Yeah, this, I can do this quickly, um, I look back, oh, she's got a number already, okay.
Oh, me?
I guess.
Okay, I had, according to the preliminary engineering report, was nine, fifty-nine, two oh six-six for the cost of the project on one inch going on the sea, um, and the construction was seven fifty-nine oh sixty-six, and the bid price came in at seven twenty-three four forty-six, difference of thirty-five thousand six nineteen. Brings the total project cost down to nine twenty-three five eighty-six seventy-seven. So you're saying half of that to levy?
It could be, there might be small extras involved, they're using more connections or something.
They find extra tile they didn't know about.
Yeah, so it could go up a little, but let's see what that number is.
We reflect in a second.
That's true.
That's not including any interest, but hopefully, well, it's, 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 nevermind, um, four sixty-one, seven eighty-three, thirty-five. So if I round up to four sixty-five even, does that work?
Somebody's took a nice round number somewhere.
Yeah.
Four hundred and sixty-five thousand even. We'll assume it's the fifty percent then.
Might be very close.
Does that work for everyone else?
Makes sense.
Are you guys? So we have a motion in a second, to use that number then?
Yes.
Four sixty-five, any other discussion? While we vote, right? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign.
This should, this should work well, I think, guys.
Well, thanks for coming in.
I see by this, Kasus has way more...
There you go.
So would they be the lead county then?
I believe they are.
I really don't understand the H.
K.
KH then, maybe it's just the HH or...
Yeah, so you can see that, yeah, up at the top, I put underneath, like, the one hundred number is Humboldt's, the one thirty-one is Kasus', and the ninety-three is Hancock's, so that, yeah, I don't know.
Well, I'll visit with some of the landowners on that ditch and see what their feelings are on it.
Okay.
And see if they think it needs to be, yeah.
Yeah. And this makes it real evident, too, that the blue is Humboldt, the greens that have surrounded is Kasus', and then these two little ones are Hancock.
Hancock?
Yep, so, um, and this was reclassified, um, so it should be a good...
Would Kasus County be the lead county on this?
I, they have to be.
They have to be.
I don't, I never found anywhere where it actually said, 'cause it's lead, but when they have seventy, over seventy-eight percent of the land, gotta be, I mean, it's, and we had reclassified this in two thousand and four.
Four.
Yep, and I have, I have an extra copy of that with me today. I'll leave that to Trish.
Do you remember which we went with for branch C, preliminary?
They're familiar, I think.
Yep, yes.
So here's for all of them, that was the debate.
Yeah, is your favorite thing, so where's the damn ditch going to in that, right here?
Right there.
Right there.
And there's, there's a dam here, there's a dam here, and there's a dam mile down here, um, but the part I've always walked is this right here, and I just know it's really full of islands and crap, and, uh, main, this main right here is half full of silt, I mean, and that's a, it's at half full of silt. Is that right, I believe it.
That's tile.
It was the four county corner right there.
This, this, this big tile comes up, there's, got that silt in the bottom of the pipe sticking in the ditch, because it's half full of silt.
Are you looking, did they fill in the wet strip some water and...
Just get you oriented, here's, here's the four county corner, and that goes into Laverne.
The county line.
Right.
The road goes into Laverne.
Yep.
So, here's Highway seventeen.
And I have, I haven't been up, the ditch stops here, it stops right there, and it's bulkhead, and then this is all mains, the rest of the way up.
The water goes, it's going this way from Prairie Creek.
Yeah.
So which way is, oops, sorry, which way is the water?
This is south, this is north.
It's coming down.
The water's coming this way?
It's coming down in here, this is open ditch, and it's going into Prairie Creek, and it's going meandering along there, so... I know you got this in your notes, Rick, to check on, like Rick said, this is bad in the ditch, we know that can be cleaned out.
Mm-hmm.
What's our story on the creek, I know you may not have that yet, but, this, this is what you were always saying, if you clean this out...
And this next section south here, they, uh, they dug out, uh, the Army Corps came in there and dug in some oxbows for the Peekershiners. And then the next section south, they did it again, um, in the county, in the county hills.
This will give the Peekershiners better water flow.
Good thinking.
Freshen them. Freshen, freshen, more, more flow to go in their oxbows that they live in.
Yeah, I'll visit with some of the farmers up there in Kasus County.
Got lots of people around there.
Yeah, I know, and I'll see what they say, and they'll probably say, that's not a big one.
Theirs call, kind of like these guys are sitting here talking about, they're the ones, they're the ones that are paying for it.
So if they don't wanna pay it, they don't figure it bothers them, it's bothering me.
This is the next...
I guess I won't argue with that either, but...
Extra copy of mine, I believe it was Trish.
Okay, that, that was a nice copy, that explains our, that explains our percentage and...
Yeah, it really, really does show a lot, so...
Obviously, somebody has to know, and our great thought process for Kasus County, and you could call it Kasus County, and they have, it's gotta be on the record someplace.
Gotta be.
It has to be.
Yeah, I really think so.
If they aren't really too worried about it, then, you know, you either had it against...
That's right, they'll just bring it to their attention.
They, oh, gosh, could you look into it, but...
Just a quick update here, um, on projects, um, let us go down the list, DD two, the private tile is still looking at this summer to build that, um, yeah, no word for a little while.
Rick, just to refresh our memory, how many wells is that project closing?
It closed two with the DD two lateral M, and you're gonna close two more with that private, with this private one closure, so four. Closure, so four in that area.
And they're two separate projects.
Two separate projects.
Two are done, right?
Yeah, the D two lateral M is done. Done, yep.
That one's done.
And you recently approved the appraisal and reclassification reports.
This, is that, is that Piesl?
Yes, Piesl's is done.
Well, I, did you get those pictures I sent to you? That was ditch was full. When we talked the other day, I told you I was out there driving around there.
Yeah.
Because that ditch was running level full.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yep.
I sent you two pictures of that, top side of that, where it crossed the road over there by that substation. Water was standing, but there was no place for the water to go. That ditch down below was so full that it was running out into the fields, and it flooded a thousand gallon water tank out into the middle of this field, that's how fast the water was running.
I was in a similar area, and a different concern that I looked at was undersized underneath the road culvert. Backing up further upstream from that, and which causing it to run over the road and into the guy's field than not where it's supposed to go.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Are you talking Alman Avenue area?
Yep.
Yeah, it's not undersized. I mean, it was six inches of rain in two hours.
Yeah, you just don't put stuff taking.
And that's what I tried to point to, yeah.
You know, it'd be different, we have six inches rain every month.
Happened more often than the rain amounts.
None of it even with that pipe, the water height was the same on both sides, it's just the fact that the dredge ditch was full. Then it could only get away so fast.
None of the design standards would have handled that rain.
No.
You're saying it would have been, if it was bigger, then it still wouldn't have gone anywhere, because it couldn't go anywhere?
It couldn't go anywhere any faster, I mean, there's a, there's a nine foot diameter pipe at the core, it went two miles downstream.
How's that looking?
That was full too, but. I mean, the bridge right around the corner up at the top, I mean, water was streaming on that. I tried running hydraulics this morning on it, trying to figure out exactly what storm we were looking at, and it's off the charts. I mean, it's beyond the five hundred year storm, is what we had.
When it comes that fast.
Yeah, I mean, we had three fourths of Weaver Township closed, and a good portion of Orange Township closed Thursday, and then by Friday, we were opening the road back up, I mean, it was just, it was a flash flood event.
And it's amazing how fast the water did go down.
Yeah.
That's what amazed me.
You've done enough work in the county that, yeah, that's, you'll see that throughout a lot of the county.
Problem then is, we're having these five hundred year storms every five years instead of every five hundred.
I hope we don't have another one like this for a while.
Well, you know, when you talk to the folks that are in that area, it's been more frequent.
But the difference is, we only had two inches of rain in Humboldt, and just on, over by Gilmore, they had.
We had four tens.
Three dits.
Northern part of the county.
So, you know.
When they had five plus inches.
It makes a difference when it comes over a twelve hour period or over an hour and a half, eight hours.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there was fields that it just looked like.
Light.
Light.
Oh, yeah, they're huge.
Yeah, I talked to farmers out there, that, you know, we had water on C forty-nine.
Over C forty-nine?
Over C forty-nine.
I saw where they re-shouldered it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had re-shouldered about ten yards of that where it washed out.
Southeast Pioneer and that curve that was over the rollout, nobody down there has ever seen it over that. I mean, it's just, it was a freaky thing.
Our dredge ditches were dropping pretty fast, and got over towards Pope Harnes, and theirs were still running level full, so.
In regards to those flooding events, and the fact that when you get all that, and you've seen it, it washes a terrific amount of debris into those ditches, potentially into the culvert structures. If that becomes a problem, as the water drops and it's plugging the outlets, is that, that's a drainage district concern to needs to, someone needs to go in there and clean that out?
Yes. The short answer, yes.
Yeah, that's, so in other words, there's a road, culvert, box culvert, whatever, and water goes out, and it is just plugged full of usually cornstalks.
Roads over, usually secondary roads will do the road culvert space.
You're talking drainage culvert.
The drainage cul, like, so it goes underneath the road, but the fact that they've got this huge rain event, it's washed so much crap into the ditch. And if it, you know, obviously has to drop enough, you notice, you know what, that's impeding the water flow now that it's kind of dropped down, that would be a clean out per the drainage. Even though the road is here, and it's just back here a little ways, that it's the problem, isn't that a drainage district concern?
If it's in the drainage.
Not a secondary roads concern.
Yeah, if it's part of the drainage.
I mean, the road, you'll fix the road.
Rick, we're fixing the roads right now, everything should be opened back up. I got ten guys coming in on Friday and work overtime to rock and pave the roads, to get everything up one mile stretched that was still closed for the weekend. But they're working on that this morning, so everything should be open to traffic.
So, yeah, your short answer is, if you see a bunch of crap left over from the storm, it's kind of like a beaver dam, you need to clean it out of there, because it's an obstruction.
Yes.
Even though it's close to the road.
Yes. Yeah, it's gonna affect the flow.
Yep.
Significantly, or can.
Okay.
Okay. DD three open ditch work is now complete, they were able to finish the chisel disking the other day. The opine ditch crossing should be, the pipe should be getting here very soon now, we will be involved in getting that set properly. The silt in the open ditch, we're not sure what we're gonna be able to do about that, but we're, we're trying to come up with a plan. DD three pipe. Let's see, oh, I, work now complete. Three dash forty-seven annexation reclassification reports were approved last week. Sluffing, we're not sure we can reach that, we don't want to bench down, we're gonna continue to monitor it.
Is that south of Thor?
That's that one, south of Runway, three forty-seven.
Okay.
Yep.
It's actually Wright County where the sluffing is going on, right?
Yes, correct, you are correct.
That's good thing.
There you go.
Thoors, that is a bad thing.
So, work on four is complete, we'll be doing the final phase here shortly, asking you to schedule a completion hearing. Again, last week, you approved the annexation reclassification reports. We've got hard copies of that back to Trish today. Erasmus and ditch crossing, we brought that letter last week, I'm not sure. Okay. Very good.
I visited with Jim, the pipe that he ordered, when they called down there and ordered it, they actually had a bigger rail car that was thicker and longer than the one he wanted. But they said they would settle, give it to him for the same price that they did it to him, so he'd get in a better pipe for his, for his crossing. When I asked him about moving that one way or the other, he said it really isn't gonna help. We moved it west, that bend is still right there, that's where the water is eating away, and it just needs some riprap in there to pull that corner, so.
Yeah, we'll still have to do something with that.
I asked him if we needed to get that rock in there before we pulled that pipe, and he said he didn't, we should be able to do it on that side. He's just waiting to hear, and Rick is gonna set up, hopefully when that ditch goes down a little bit.
Yeah.
To shoot the elevation and stuff, so everybody's on the same page.
Yep, we've got the design, old design, so we know what the elevation of the bottom of the ditch is supposed to be there. No cleanup was done there yet, so that wasn't taken down to design grade, but he'll have to take it to the design grade to install the pipe, so we'll be there for that.
For Humboldt Homes, they're talking about.
There was, uh, already private crossing from one side of the field into a little corner. White.
Is there an issue or something?
Humboldt Homes is looking at replacing a walk bridge that they got over there. A structure, and we had mentioned a rail car as a possibility. But that was, that's wrong, that's for some.
Oh, okay.
We probably should visit with them before they get too deep into that.
Yeah.
So we get it set the right depth and everything.
There you go, that's, yeah, important. DD six main tile in branch B, we have drone footage on YouTube now, if you care to look at that. And you've got the reclassification reports submitted, and hearing is scheduled for July sixteenth. Wrap things up for that one. DD eleven, sub five, plans and specs will be released this week. Basically worked up, they have to summarize quantities for me for the half inch coefficient yet, and then I can finish the specs, and we'll get notice out to contractors. You've scheduled the wedding for July twenty-third at nine AM. Everything looks a go for that. DD thirty-five, or, yeah, DD thirty-five branch C, I noted last time that the tile has been disconnected from the ag drainage well, but they won't do the plugging of the well till fall, because they got seed corn in there, and we don't want to disturb that, so. We should see them starting hopefully by the end of next month, putting the pipe in the ground. Certy five outlet from Lee Union Cemetery, I'm gonna work with Trish to come up with these owners, we talked about that last time. So we have a list of who to notify from informal meeting, I believe you talked about having an informal hearing or just a meeting with the landowners.
Where do you want Humboldt Homes at?
Have Humboldt Homes. Okay.
They got a crossing?
They have a little footbridge. Because they're on both sides of it, and they run mowers and stuff back across it.
A bridge, are they, a bridge bridge?
Well, they have a bridge, yeah.
A bridge.
What are they trying to, what are they up to?
They want something better, and it's a bridge.
The bridge is only about an inch wider than the mower on either side, and it's.
Old.
Pretty deteriorated on the bottom side, they fixed it once, but.
They want to put a different bridge?
They want to put something else in, yeah.
But it's a bridge, not a culvert?
Yeah, it's a bridge right now.
It's just a wooden bridge that they built, a walk bridge.
It'd be good if we could get something scheduled, make it a part of it. The tri-district, this is just a summary of what I gave you already, showing the lands, the acres that each of the three counties have. Just for your general information, and then you can follow through with what you want to do.
Yeah.
Make sure Kasus County is aware of the lead county from what we can see.
Yeah, I don't know, I didn't talk about that.
I mean.
Many of the farmers in there, you don't care, they don't want to, I see no reason to push it if they don't want it.
But I mean, if they did have a concern about something, wouldn't Kasus County have to kind of.
Organize it, yeah.
Or look at.
Yes.
Okay, well, we're scheduled for a phone call at nine fifteen with Denise, you got anything, Trish, else?
That Larry, yeah. Bourne Baggs called, we're making that.
I didn't know. You what?
I'm working with my Borland on an issue. A levy that I set this spring. And it's come to their attention that there was a clerical error, and it was done by Idell. When Mike figured interest, he used a calculation, I don't know what it comes from, honestly. And I do strictly the numbers that he reimbursed us, so essentially, they reimbursed us seventy-five thousand dollars too much towards that district for ag well closure. They're requesting that we pay that back.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, yeah.
So, I guess I've been figuring, trying to figure this out, I refigured what the assessment would be. Since I used Mike's numbers for this, essentially, we're still going to have to pay back twenty-five thousand. It's kind of a wash, but you, I don't know, I don't know how to explain it.
So that's what the state's come up with, that wants to give us back twenty-five thousand, relivy that out to the farmers, something like that?
Yeah, when I pay back the seventy-five thousand dollars, it leaves the account twenty-five thousand dollars negative. Because using his numbers, it made it wash sort of, I don't know, I really don't even know how this works. Anyway, the warrant's total outstanding on the project was five hundred and two thousand two ninety-three seventy-four. Reimbursement from Idell's was two hundred and seventy thousand seven fifty-seven thirty-eight. That leaves two thirty-one, five thirty-six. And then I had to subtract INS reimbursement for their mistake, that they did, a forty-five thousand nine ninety-three. And that left a total now to levy of one eighty-five five forty-two fifty-four-five. And then I gotta add back into the backside of pay the seventy-five thousand, and it leaves two sixty-five forty-two forty-five.
How many farmers is that at?
How many?
Quite a few.
Yeah, where do you think, because lateral E is also involved.
Yeah.
But it's a simple thing.
Fact that they, they made an error.
Yeah.
And it has to be made, right, because this taxpayer's taxes that are being spent, some are not supposed to be spent, so we need to give it back, and levy it back to where it needs to be levied.
So your levy approximately came out to be twenty-five thousand total for the district?
Yep.
And Idell's, I believe.
And I want to double check that, that's just my quick figures this morning and that. We received a letter from a landowner that wants the answers on this, but the answer's coming backwards, because he's asking why we pay the money to Idell, because they pay out, so, I don't know. It's just kind of complicated and something. It's a down go through.
You, you did discuss with Mike last week then, to come up with.
The numbers?
No, not yet.
What's that?
Not yet.
Not, you haven't talked to him?
Just briefly, I mean, he told me how he figured it incorrectly, he showed me the form that he used, it was basically a hundred thousand dollars too much that he figured for interest. And since they paid seventy-five percent, it's seventy-five thousand dollars that they, was the actual number that they gave us too much. That I had already put into the account, and it's considered in levy, so.
So it just says to be.
Relivied.
Relivied.
Yeah, work through the numbers, relivy it, this is a little more added paperwork for you, but it needs to be done.
Right.
But the good thing is, is that it's found now, not three years, now.
Yeah.
Then we gotta go back to the farmers and say, well, oh, by the way, there was a mistake.
When we finally learned.
Three years ago, now we need seventy-five thousand, so.
And Idell's is admitting it was their mistake.
Yeah.
That caused it. They miscalculated.
Although they had the project cost, hadn't, hadn't it come to their attention by the landowner it would have been divided by, but.
Right.
Wrong or right, it still has to be paid back, and.
That's what I say, they admitted. That's what I say. They admitted to us that it was their mistake in their figuring, but there again, once it's brought to light and they caught the mistake, it just has to be corrected.
There's still the same people that we deal with trying to close the rest of these ag drains.
Yeah, basically that money will still come back to Humboldt County. It'll just go to a different project.
It'll just Cheater.
Yeah, yeah.
In a sense, that's the whole thing. If we don't do it and do it correctly, then. Just a little more paperwork here, sorry. Glad we caught it now as opposed to three years from now, so. Anything else? Motion?
Motion to go out of drainage?
Go out of drainage.
Second, the motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign? We're out.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Correct that.
This is actually a good district.
Thank you. Sounds like it could be a rainy week.
Yeah.
Lots of work done.
Yeah. Good luck with your glasses.
Well, I've already got the appointment and I'm just waiting for glasses.
Yeah, the district.
There's a lot of people down in Saturday that were.
Two things. One, you said you're going to just see.
The appointment came in, she had duct tape on there. I can't even use the duct tape on mine.
No, I left it.
And because her mom.
Second part of that is, I think.
She's pretty hard in this county. Almost mid-door.
That's true.
The end of the dark. Great work. Most land rains.
You're the gay big dog.
I'm going to have to make a joke about how many Iowa State brands it takes to make a pot of coffee. Got Rybers over there.
I never touched it, so leave me out of it.
Doesn't look very good. I'll break my nose.
Oh, jeez, it's first.
I don't play water.
Lot of work.
Water.
You went in the end.
We got plenty of coffee in there.
I can see, now you didn't get it down the hole.
You didn't get the basket in the hole. Told you to put it in the hole. Thing about Carl does not learn from his mistakes. Here comes a new coffee pot again.
There we go.
In the hole. There.
Those messy dudies.
Carl, let's pour some water through it for a while. I went over and I was going to take, tell them and think, that's awful. That's good enough water, though.
See what happens this time. Sorry about that, Ken.
I threw him with it.
See, that's why I bring my own.
I'm going to have to start. It smells good. Smelling it stinking. All right, I think we're back. Are we, is it Ben first before Denise?
I already called Denise and told her to ruin like.
Okay.
Okay.
Come on up, Ben. She already expected the power back away.
Yep.
Morning.
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 The one thing I got on the agenda for today is to approve the fuel quote for fiscal year 2019 to W&amp;H Coop. We had two quotes on this, W&amp;H and Russell's. Russell's is doing it for us right now and W&amp;H has done it for us in the past. The two of them quoted us basically, what it is, it's their handling fee above the rack cost, the DOT cost that we pay for fuel. This year, W&amp;H was the cheapest.
Nice we have competition.
Yeah.
Make a motion to award the fuel quote. W&amp;H go up?
We have a motion.
Oh, second.
And second. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carries.
And then Wednesday, we do have the bid letting date for those three culvert projects at 10:00. So I know Dave said that you're going to be, I'm going to travel and.
We meet downstairs this Wednesday, right?
I'm going to be gone also Wednesday.
I'll be here.
I'll be here, but I have, I'm in another board or another meeting, so I'll have to run back and forth between here and so that we have a corner, right?
I think so. Don't you do that for?
Well, I'll be able to go talk to them for five minutes then.
10:30, 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock. We have to meet downstairs, everybody?
No.
Here, we meet here.
We'll move them.
Okay, we'll move them.
I have that down.
Here, 10 o'clock.
So we'll cover it for you two.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and back to your comment about pulling 10 guys out of the we worked for the weekend after, you know, we've had, we switched to the 10-hour days and then we find out, you know, we have this water problem and we get, so we end up pulling 10 guys on the first or second weeks that we
Yeah.
are doing it and they come to work on a Friday anyway.
Yeah, so we pulled about 40 hours of overtime for the guys. We got 10 guys, they all worked about
Worked the morning.
Between four and five hours, they're done by, I think about 11, 11:30 at the latest. And mainly that was just to get rock on the road so that we didn't have all of the roads closed. The water came up so fast and flooded out a lot of our cross pipe culverts, small boxes that are under the roadway, large culverts that are in the dredge ditches. I mean, it, it just.
It was everywhere.
It was everywhere, yeah. And like I said, I talked to quite a few farmers out there when we were running around throwing barricades up and, you know, between, between the late planting and then us paving down there and then now
Now this.
Now this. I mean, it's been a frustrating spring for them.
It's a bad area. Mostly because of the weather.
Yeah.
So my question, I was going south and I see we had a dump truck sitting down in the God's Park Road. Were we out of barricades at that point?
We were, we were waiting on barricades at that point. We had run out of barricades in the Humboldt shop and we were waiting for Boad to get down there with their trailer.
So we just headed across?
So he parked sideways on, to keep people from going across the God Park extension. And then Dave Powell was posted at the east end of that.
But we don't, it isn't where we need more.
No, we don't, we don't need more. We just, we had physically run out and needed another shop to bring theirs to us. But like you said, it was so spotty, Humboldt didn't get it, you know. So everybody else was doing their normal thing on Thursday, hauling rock, laying roads and, and everybody from our shop was southwest putting up barricades and, and, I mean, we were stealing barricades from the paving job, setting those up sideways. Then they showed up on Thursday and started collecting them. So we had to do the scramble to figure out which ones they put up. But, yeah, it was, it was about 40, 50 hours overtime on Friday to get, I'd say 95% of our roads open. We just ended up with one on.
Now you sent a note that we had.
I think it was.
Money well spent.
Well, I mean, again, we're talking 500-year floods, so.
Yeah.
The fact of it happening very often with no matter what hour days is pretty slight. You just have to do what you got to do.
We, and we can't count on it. And I, I told the foreman, I said, just consider this like a snow event, you know.
It's a rain event.
When we get, when we get snow on a Friday night, you know, you got to work Saturday, so.
Yeah.
We got six inches of rain in two hours.
All right, so the other thing I got for you is yesterday at church, I got browbeat because of our C49 and the lady took exception to Ken's article that, that she said, she was out in their yard, she lives over by Pioneer and people were coming down the road and they found out the road's closed on C49, so then they backed up and went the old way in Pioneer, thinking they were going to come around the next mile. Well, that road's closed. And she said, these people are from out of town, so they don't have a clue, you know, that they could go back towards the highway. I said, well, how do we, you know, we really don't have any way of, other than put a sign out that here, go four miles to the east and 169 is over there, or the other direction. They, you know, us that live here have a little better understanding that you go down here and, you know, they're paving this direction.
Getting there.
Yeah. So I guess, but she just said, you know, kind of for the out-of-towners, because she noticed in the article it said, most of the people are from out of town, that they were driving on our new concrete or, or in the ditch or whatever. She said, is there a way? And I said, I would, you know, when we, what was it, 12 miles, 11 miles?
It was 11 miles of paving. The most trouble that we ran into, I guess, is once we got west of P29, which has less houses on it, but it's over in the Pioneer area where if you're trying to figure out how to stay on blacktop without getting to gravel, there's, there's no way. You got to run up to Highway 3.
Right.
And the contractor did his best attempt at trying to keep everything fenced off and closed off, but when you got people that are taking down the barricades and taking down the fencing to get onto the project because they want to stay on the hard surface. Aside from putting Kruger out there with a shotgun, I don't know how you stop them from doing it.
Well, she said that she was out in the yard and this person drove down from their place and then she come back and said, well, I can't get across the road and I'm not coming around here. So, you know, you can understand the person's frustration.
Yep, yep.
Because they, you know, get off on the gravel road, well, we had 11 miles of closure.
Yeah, you got to go a long way.
You just got to go around it. I mean, that's, and living in Iowa, so.
And we had all, all of our detour signing up, advanced warnings to try and keep people off of the project and send them around, but, you know, when you, when you drive up 169 and you, you know, miss or, or don't see the, the detour sign that's telling you to keep going straight into town and the barricades are wide enough for a car to fit through, they'll drive onto the project and then they keep going west until they run into a fence or a piece of equipment that they can't get around and and some creative people take the ditch to go around it.
Well, I told her I would bring it up. I said, we don't have very many 12-mile, 12-mile stretches that we do because our pocketbook isn't that big, but
Right.
I appreciate your service.
I'll, I'll look and see if there's something different that we could do in the future, but.
All right. Appreciate it. Tell the guys thank you for Friday. Appreciate that. Okay.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Now are we ready for Denise? Okay.
I told me must I have an accident policy. She's concerned about.
No, please. Hi Denise, Peggy here. I'm going to put you on speakerphone, okay? Hold on. Hello, can you hear us?
Yes, I sure can.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I asked Peggy if I could speak with you this morning because I recently became aware of a benefit that is part of a union contract where the employees covered under that benefit have a maximum of $300 limit for an accident. So that would be an accident that happens outside of the workplace because if it was during work, work comp would cover that. So this would be an accident other than an accident at work. And there weren't any specifics in the contract that explained how that benefit would be paid and if, you know, any, any limitations on the benefit. So I thought we could discuss so I could get a better understanding of what that benefit entails.
Okay.
Um, you know, in the, in the contract, from what I can see, it simply says emergency accident maximum, a maximum of 300 per accident. So I assume what that means is that pay, we only pay $300 per accident and anything over $300 would be paid out of your partner's comp fund?
I don't.
I have no idea.
I don't have any idea.
I would assume that too, Denise. We've had this happen with a few employees already.
Okay.
Um, one guy just happened to be very vigilant about it and checked. He thought he saw something in the union contract that said he was supposed to be covered and he'd had two different visits and he, same thing happened on both. He had to pay for the full thing.
Right, because this obviously is not something that an insurance company is going to provide for you. This is something that the county is just going to have to pay for. Walmart's not going to, this isn't going to be kind of the Walmart contract.
Exactly.
Yeah, so this is something that EBS will have to do. If we, we're certainly capable of doing it. I just, I don't know, I just need to be able to tell them how to program the system so that it just doesn't pay indefinitely. I mean, I assume that, um, I guess I'm hoping that there's more like money there that somebody could provide me, so, I mean, if the accident costs, you know, a million dollars over a lifetime, is this a, is this a, is this a benefit that pays for the life of, of the employee? I, I guess I just look at for some rules.
Well, how are other counties?
We don't have this on anybody else.
Nobody else's?
No, I've never seen this before.
And one of your questions then is, is there a cap on it and if so, how much?
Right. And is it going to be paid out, like, only on the employee's workplace there? I mean, if, let's say, I guess if we could just talk about a couple of worst-case kind of examples. So let's say somebody is snowing or riding or a holiday and they get in a terrible accident and now they're paraplegic. What is this, what is this going to do? I mean, is this benefit going to pay? I mean.
I don't think so.
Is this benefit, is this benefit supposed to pay from $300 after Walmart contract? And then Walmart obviously will pick up after that? And then, so it, it pays that one gap one time? Or is it going to pay that, you know, each year if this person ends up being disabled? Is they going to pay for that gap every single year going forward or is it just that one time?
It stated that it says
It doesn't really say.
Maximum of $300 per accident, so that's.
Is that what the employee pays?
That's the way I understand it. It's what the employee pays.
Okay.
That's the way I would.
So you have a $750 deductible? The employees are responsible for that deductible. Is that they're just going to pay, if it's an accident, they just pay $300 and then the county picks up?
Who wrote this in here to begin with?
Yeah, I mean, where did this?
That was a union.
What's that?
That was a union agreement.
From way back when.
So obviously then it would be the county picking up the difference. This way, if you're talking deductible, this means that, uh, they're paying 300 of the.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you read this Denise, is your thought process that it's $300 towards the deductible? Is that how you would understand this?
I, it's so vague. I've never, I'm quite honest, I've never seen something so vague. Because it says that, you know, above the benefit, it says there's a deductible, there's a deductible of $750. Then it goes on to say though, that there's an emergency accident maximum of $300. So which is it? Is there a $750 deductible? But if there's, if the maximum's 300, does that trump the $750?
I, I wonder, you know, if you go to the emergency room for like a broken arm on a Saturday, it's going to cost you, you know, your, your, your insurance doesn't, that goes towards your deductible, so I would think that 300 would go towards your deductible.
So, so the employee does this, um, yes, let's say it's a broken arm.
Say it costs 800 bucks, you know.
Right.
You would, we'd be covering from the 300 to the 750. That's the way I understand it, reading it. Maybe we should come up with a face-to-face discussion on this.
Yeah.
Well, you could look at it that way or you could look at it, they're going to stand 300, you're going to get $300 for an accident. You're saying you're thinking the difference between 300 and 750.
I figured that would be maximum.
So if there's a $750 deductible, I think you get, they're going to the emergency room, go away for less than that. So let's just say they, they go to the emergency room for whatever. They're going to pay the $300 and then the county's going to take the $450 of their deductible.
That's the way I understand it.
If the, this was put in per the union contract agreement, then we need to check back with the union and see if, what they're, how they.
They understand.
How they understand it. So it's either, the way I. How they understand it. So, it's either, the way I would think, it's either you're gonna pay three hundred or if you use seven fifty as a deductible, you're gonna pay four fifty...
Yeah, the employee...
Per one time per accident.
The employee pays the three hundred, we pay the four fifty, that gets them to their deductible limit.
Or...
A one-time deal.
They get three hundred and they pay the four fifty. One or the other.
Yeah.
But it's...
So, I mean, so the thing is, is that this insurance, this is how it works. You have the deductible and the employee pays that deductible typically. The employee pays that deductible, nobody else comes out. Then they have co-insurance, right, so that they pay ten percent of remaining charges until they get to the fifteen hundred dollar out-of-pocket maximum. So, they're gonna pay seven hundred and fifty dollars, um, then ten percent until they spend another seven hundred and fifty dollars and then they're done. So, in this case, they would only pay three hundred dollars. They wouldn't pay any co-insurance. So, you would actually be taking up from three hundred dollars to fifteen hundred, not seven hundred and fifty.
I can't even think of it.
I think we need to get clarification of who's... What their interpretation was, if that's a union contract.
Okay.
Is that how they take it, Denise, as you just described it and as we kinda are thinking? We need to get clarification on that.
Yeah.
We don't have it, obviously, as a board.
Right. And it sounds like there's, um, there's two people that pay... That I think Peggy's aware of that have, um, actually had an accident where they paid more than the three hundred dollars. So, I think they might be looking for a benefit from us. Again, which is fine. We'll go back and pay it. We just need to understand how to program it.
Yeah.
Right, well, we need to talk to we.
I think we need to go to our union rep and have her look at that.
And that was one of our questions too, Denise, when Chris and I were talking it over. Is this gonna be made retroactive? And if it is, back to how far?
Yes, we'll make it retroactive based on what you tell us to do. Um, and same with that timeframe, it'll be about up to you, but we are gonna require proof. So, it's not gonna be a verbal, you know, declaration. We're gonna have to see, you know, build something that is proof that they, you know, did actually have an accident within the correct date and all of those things.
Do something. We'll have Renee run down for us.
Yes.
But if you wanna visit with your union and then get back with me, that's fine. If you'd like me to come upstairs to visit with you personally, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Well, when we see what the union, what their interpretation is and we can get a...
Yeah.
Right.
Back with you.
Yep.
I mean, there's no sense of you running up there and going, "Yeah, their interpretation."
Okay.
Unless you wanna drive up to see it.
She's thinking of...
I think that's a no.
Is that a no?
I always wanna see you guys, so I'd have to...
Ah!
I know.
We'll get more information first.
All right, we'll check in, try to get back with you.
Okay, just let me know.
Thank you.
Get back. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Denise.
Bye-bye.
Renee, can we check that out?
We're gonna have to give us some more detailed information. That is too vague.
Can be read either way. Can be read either way.
Well, yeah, somebody's gotta know what...
It's gotta be cleared out.
Yep.
Okay. Now, we're looking for our last item. I'm thinking that we have our people here. McKinley?
Been sitting here twenty minutes.
Well, that's 'cause we had to talk to Denise and she was holding us up. That's why we've been twenty minutes. Welcome.
I'm McKinley. Hi, Angela.
Hi, Eric. Well, uh, before we get into exactly why we're here today, I wonder how many of you are familiar with the parent connection in the work that Angela does here in Humboldt County?
I am.
Just Eric. So, little Carl, okay?
Before I got it on your board.
I was already in between there too, but only for lack of ears, so...
Okay. Well, if we have time, I'll give her just a few minutes to explain what it is that she does.
Um, I work with families in Hamilton, Humboldt, Wright County, and it's a volunteer program so the families have to want this. Um, and it's short-term parenting classes that are group-based and in-home. And I work, um, solely on prevention of child abuse, so building happy, healthy families. So, we go in and, um, I have an evidence-based curriculum that has been proven to work that I personally can buy... You know, I'm a better mom every time I teach the class. And it works on just building healthy, strong families and raising healthy children. It's a lot cheaper to raise a healthy child than it is to fix a broken adult. Um, and one of the things that I really focus on is sexual abuse prevention for children. Um, it is very, very rampant. It is very common. Every week I deal with parents that are children that have been sexually abused. Um, it... We are number two in Wright County, fourteen in Hamilton, and seventeen in Humboldt, and that's just three percent of the cases that are ever caught. Um, and the statistics are here in Humboldt, one in five little girls and one in ten little boys will be sexually abused before their eighteenth birthday. And I have worked with families in Humboldt, multiple families, that have had this issue happen. And so, um, and one of the successes I'm really excited about is, over the last few months, I was working with a parent who realized while we were talking, um, that her daughter was being groomed by a sex offender. And so, she did the idea that this is that, that is that behavior and we were able to stop that abuse before that happened. And, you know, that's, to me, that's one of the most damaging long-term effects of a child is sexually abused. And so, it's, I, you know, I love this opportunity that I've been given to work with families there. Did that kind of answer some questions about the parent connection?
Yeah, more. It's more than just that too, though.
Oh, yes.
There's a lot of stuff you do.
Yes, yes.
And mention that, you know, I'm learning as I go when I meet with these folks, but, uh, this parent connection isn't not income-based.
No, it's not income-based.
Yes, per some of the building families things that we talk about, but, so it's open to everybody.
Every parent's grandparents who have a child zero to eighteen, guardian, you know, it's just to want to be a better parent. And some parents are dealing with just having a behavior issue and some are dealing with total breakdown of the family. So, we go in and they want it, so that makes it a lot more successful. Parents want this to come in.
Um, and she's, um, one thing, as she's busy, she has a waiting list, you know, where there are all kinds of families that want the service. Um, and so, what we're here for today is, um, let's say, two Fridays ago or maybe it's three Fridays ago now, we received word from the Department of Human Services that they were gonna be cutting the funding to Angela's program for, by fifteen thousand dollars and that that will go into effect on July first. Um, and so, part of that is we submitted a grant application and our parent development grant scored eighty-eight percent, so we were fourth out of thirty-four applicants, which is a pretty good score that I think reflects the work that she does. Um, but this is my first time writing for these big complicated grants and I made the mistake of only asking for the amount of money that we needed. And when they gave us back our score, they said, "You're fourth out of thirty-four, but the most you could ever get is eighty percent of what you asked for." So, if you're not inflating your costs or asking for things that you don't need, you'll never get what you asked for. And as a result, we aren't getting what we asked for. Um, so, what we've done is, um, come up with sort of a plan to plug this gap for next year. And, um, we've gone to Hamilton and Wright County and we've visited with the Building Families Finance Committee and all three of those entities have agreed to kick in twenty-five hundred dollars. So, we're up to seventy-five hundred of that fifteen thousand now. Um, we believe that, um, have sort of an agreement in principle with the Decategorization Board that if all three counties and building families chip in twenty-five hundred dollars, seems likely they will also chip in twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, and by making some cuts, we were gonna purchase a new curriculum, which is about two thousand dollars. And so, we won't do that and we'll make up the whole fifteen thousand dollar gap for this next year. Um, and so, that's, um, what our request is, to keep this going without having to cut back Angela's hours and the number of families that she serves, um, to get everyone to pitch in just a little bit and keep things going.
That's the only program we got cut within your organization?
Um, that's the only program where we've seen a cut of this magnitude, you know.
McKinley, I mentioned this, you, like I said, speak to this a lot better than I ever can, but didn't you say that it is a one fiscal year asking, so for twenty-five hundred dollars, you're not gonna be back every year because you need that time to rearrange? So, it's just, at this point, it's a one time to get through fiscal, the next fiscal year?
And so, what we have from the last big fundraiser that Angela did, we've got a little bit of money that will carry forward and we're gonna add two or three new fundraisers this year. And all of that money, we're gonna be putting in a pot to get us through fiscal year twenty because this is a two-year funding cycle. And then, um, next time, I'll play the game, I guess. We have to go back to the Department of Human Services, so...
So, you said in Humboldt County, there's a waiting list of people that your clients?
Yes, mhm. I have a waiting list.
I think that it's something that, you know, is being used. And if we don't consider, um, we're gonna end up hurting the services that our people are using. I don't know. Somebody has to look at somebody and say, "Do we have twenty-five hundred dollars that we can rob Peter to pay Paul?" I mean, that's kind of what we do. Um, but I definitely believe that it's something that, uh, a program that we're gonna purge if we don't.
Well, I agree with Bruce and I think, I mean, the thought process of, uh, putting that program on hold for a year and then starting to back up would be extremely detrimental, uh, you know, to have to take a year off.
I was on the building for a county board for about six years. They do great work. I hate to see you lose out. I hate to see our people lose out.
Not to take anything away from the other aspects of building families, but this is, they're all... It's all important, but this is also very important. And, yeah, to take a year off and knowing that, yeah, I think the good thing is it's just a one-time thing to get back on track because of the lack of funds. It's a pretty small investment to, you know, and everybody's putting in a little bit to keep this moving and McKinley knows what he's gotta do to keep it moving forward after that, so... I think it's a pretty good situation. I'd highly recommend that we come up with twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Unless Peggy's just like, "No, we just cannot do it," but...
I can't say we can't, but I'll need to look and see where we take it from.
Yeah, that's come out of somebody else's pocket, yeah.
Well, when does... You need the...
Yeah.
What's the date that you need to know that yea or nay or...
Um, you know, the sooner the better, but, um, we'll, um... You know, even if the, all the counties weren't able to come through, we wouldn't have to look at reducing her hours until, I mean, probably, if I have a... You know, we could probably make it six or seven months before the budget. We would just have to say, "Okay, you're gonna have to go down to thirty-five hours a week" or something. So, it doesn't have to show up tomorrow, but...
I think in six months, we'd be able to come up with a carryover amount.
That's no fair. We have an answer by next week.
Yeah, we can do it, yeah.
Do you wanna make a motion contingent upon the...
Availability.
I'd make, I'd make a motion contingent upon the finances that Peggy says she could have to us by next week that we do approve the twenty-five hundred dollar one-time funding...
I'm taking that motion.
To the parent connection.
We have a motion in a second, so the funding is available. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried.
Keep up your good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for all you do.
Keep up the good work. Yep, thanks, Angela.
It's your first year on job, isn't it?
Yep.
She's coming around nicely, though.
Oh, yeah, he's wonderful. Thank you very much.
All right, same here.
Thanks, Angela. Thanks, McKinley.
Okay. Now, we're to the discussion on the twenty-eighties.
I sent an email out to all the cities and gave them a copy of their... These are just the cities that didn't enter into the law enforcement levy. Um, so it's everybody but, uh, I got my book back here somewhere with this stuff. Everybody except for, um, Bode, Bradgate, Dakota City, Livermore, and Thor. For everybody else, the agreement is still in effect until June thirtieth. Um, told them that if they had anything they wanted to discuss on the agreement to let us know at this meeting here today. I have a couple of emails. Um, heard from Addison, they had no suggestions on the contract. They believed it's as good as it is. Gilmore City, they discussed it at their council meeting. The only concern they had was, um, the enforcement of city ordinances, but they didn't know what could be done about that. And pricing, and I couldn't tell her anything on pricing because we don't know yet. We're still working on this. So, I'm assuming, since I haven't heard from any other cities, that there are no other concerns.
We did do that C ordinance things before. That's beyond our control, most generally.
Yeah, when they have the law enforcement levy in effect, that takes... These are just the cities that don't have that in effect. So, to get this going so that it's effective July first instead of a gap in services, that's why I keep bringing it before you to see, is there any changes you wanted to make to the agreement? I mean, we had in there a five percent increase every year for the two years of the agreement. And I don't know if you wanna go forward with another two-year agreement, if you want it to be a one-year agreement, if you want it to be a five-year agreement. I mean, I have no idea.
I remember when we said that, we started out way below what most counties have already, so I think the five percent would be very much in order to your, to your concept. I think that'd be fine. It was like you said, I've been to those meetings with you, Carl, and we're at ten dollars, was it ten dollars per head?
Yeah.
Oh, my God. In most counties, most cities are paying twenty-five and fifty and seventy-five.
I think that the biggest thing that they were concerned of, and we went to the one at Livermore, is at Livermore, was as long as they knew, heard prior and up in advance, they could put it into their budget, then everything... You drop the hammer and say, "Well, it's ten percent or X amount of dollars."
Yeah, that's acted on after the first of July that year. This would be giving plenty of time.
So...
Are you saying that was a two-year agreement and that's ending now?
Yes.
So, we need to establish like at least another two-year agreement?
Another two-year or five-year, whatever we prefer, I guess.
I think two-years.
I think a two-year, just, you know, that five percent? The past one was five percent a year?
Both of us feel the opportunity to...
I would, I would make, if we need a motion, I would say, make a motion to continue, well, continue as is another two-year contract as per the past two-year contract. No changes and re-up that for two years.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Do you wanna leave the five percent?
Yeah, I'd just leave it. Yeah.
Agreement as before.
Yep.
Okay.
And put it for just another two years.
Any other discussion with the motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Hey, I can get new agreements typed up and out to the cities since I'll have them before the end of the year.
Yeah. Like Carl said, the timing is better. That's why we wanna get it to them so they know where they're working for the next two years in their budgets.
Right, yep.
Okay, anything else?
Um, I do have a few things that you would pass that to Rick to sign. Um, Dorsey and Whitney had done some checking for us on some financing with the equipment lease at the LAC. And of course, they have given us a statement for their fee. Um, I'm not sure if that should come out of you guys, all the county funds, or if it goes to the LAC.
I think the LAC.
Well, it's for equipment. This is for Dorsey's, Whitney's?
It was for the Motorola lease. We had them take a look at it to see if it looked like it was gonna be a good...
It's still there in transit, I think.
I don't know. Well, it's for equipment.
Yeah, it's for equipment, yeah.
I'd say LAC.
So, let it come before the LAC board?
I think so.
What was the amount?
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, good.
Okay, other than that, um, we received a new, from that... Okay, other than that, um, we received a new, from the Department of Revenue, what our estimated local option sales tax is going to be for next year. Actually down about ten thousand dollars, I'll pass this around, so you can take a look at it. Um, we projected in our estimate the same amount of money, but it isn't gonna hurt us a lot if we don't get all of that, 'cause we don't spend all of it out of there. Um, I need you to sign, last week when we did the canvas, um, I was using the canvas books as we were going through, and then got back to my desk and realized we didn't sign the front pages of any of them.
Thankfully.
So we've got three of those for you.
We were running out of ink.
I know. And then some of the pages that I had you sign, it was just on the county races. If a individual receives five percent of the votes cast for that offense, um, then they need to be written in on the canvas. And I had them under the scatters, but not individually listed. So in, in some of the races, if someone got one vote, that was enough to put them on. So we had to amend the canvases, so you'll need to sign all of these, yeah.
Well, the rules here, Carl.
Yeah, it didn't affect anything on the state, it didn't affect any of the numbers. The numbers were still there, you might have said, you know, there were five under scatters, but now there's two, this guy has two, and this guy has one, and this guy has one, and somebody else has one, so. Um, we'll go back to that. I think that's it, I've got this one.
Getting ready for November now, right?
That's right.
Well, I think we're down to committee report.
You gonna be able to see this line?
Sure.
Okay, committee report. Last week, we had. Oh, Tuesday night, I went to that Discover Humboldt, which we were all invited to, they had a pretty good crowd, and you saw that new handout in the reminder, and that was kind of a nice one.
You know, with the magazine?
And then, for your information, this is mainly affecting me, but I had a meeting with IFRS down in Fort Dodge. And when you guys get out of supervisors, I don't think it affects you, but it affects me. I was already taking IFRS when I entered the board of supervisors. I can't add it to my new retirement, I gotta take all that as cash and pay tax on it. The county match, my match, plus interest. So I need, I need some handouts. Uh, we had a, we had daycare equipment, we put together Friday night and Saturday. Nobody showed up Friday night, we worked Saturday. I worked till noon, and most of the crew worked till five o'clock. It's all put together, ready for the open house over here. That was it. Okay, I didn't have anything official. I did took a ride out towards Rutland and got a couple of weed problems, talked to Eric on that, so. That's all I had.
No official, other committee business last week, and I looked at a few drainage concerns, but nothing official.
Let's see, I had my IDDA meeting in Hokey on Wednesday morning. Um, on that, um, you know, last week, we approved the, uh, litigation fund, three thousand dollars. Uh, all those bills have been paid, and according to the records, the balance is back to where it was, about sixty-seven thousand in the account now, back to where it was before, the Dwyane Water Works, so we're pretty well peeled on that now. Uh, they did approve a increase in the dues that the county pays the drainage districts from two and a half cents an acre to three cents an acre. And it's been five years since they've had an increase, so it was about a four percent increase per year. Uh, and that's basically what funds the IDDA. And that was about it on that. I had a Humboldt County Development on Thursday morning. Seven, and I had one little, it was, they thought it was a county project, county drainage issue, but it's, it's a private tile issue, and I pushed him in the right direction there, and was concerned about what, what, uh, Secretary Rhodes pays, and 'cause it's got issues going through the road, he thinks. I told him, "Get a private contractor out there and dig it up and find out what the problem is, and then come to the Secretary Rhodes with his conclusions, rather than standard or look at it and guess." So.
Good.
And that was it for me.
Okay, I had no official meetings, I had just several drive-arounds for the drainage as well, so, so I had.
I did, uh, meet with Ben Friday, and we've got flagpoles ordered for all three secondary road buildings.
Good work.
Just an FYI, for next, uh, next Monday, the Food Pantry is getting, um, pork loins from, I think it's from Iowa Select on Monday. Uh, they don't have the time yet. There are fifty-pound boxes of pork loins, and then on Tuesday, the Food Pantry truck will be in between ten and eleven, so. Hopefully, my scout will be there.
Monday, this will be a morning.
Next week, yeah. Monday and Tuesday.
Okay.
I'll remind you next week.
Yeah, give me a call or something.
That's Monday, the truck coming on Monday, ten, eleven, or Tuesday?
That's, uh, I was talking about this Monday.
So you will just go Monday, then pick up the pork loins then?
Um, I just don't, I just unload, I don't get involved in who gets what. You don't have to talk to the ladies.
I'll do that.
I'm sure they'll be available once they're there. With that, Peggy's pile is complete?
I do have one thing regards to weeds, yeah, Dave called me on that. If you have anyone that's called, any really big concerns about weeds someplace, in the right of ways, obviously, uh, let me know by the end of this week, because I'm gonna, Don talked to me, Don Reifer, and per kind of our casual agreement is, if we know of some egregious outbreaks, he will get those taken care of, he said sooner than later, 'cause he said we're caught up, or, you know, after their ugly spring and all the spraying they do around the state, he says, "We're, we're better spot now than a couple of weeks ago or a month ago." So he said, he would, so that's why Dave called, uh, I talked to Ben, I'll talk to him again. I think the, some of the road guys have got some locations noted, and that's what Don is looking for, because he said, "We get back and forth through and around and across the county, go, even go to other jobs," and he said, "If we can," but he would like kind of a list, so if they can get part of it, then part of it. They don't, you know, wanna be driving around aimlessly, but they will take care of some of the egregious outbreaks.
They get programs done, we're real well.
Yeah.
Probably enter into it.
And then, of course, and I tell people that even bring it to my attention, that the, the major blanket coverage, if you will, will be late summer, early fall, but it will be across the entire county. So we should be, you know, in pretty good shape. But we wanna, so if anybody, anybody can call me, and I've just been piling the list, or getting the list from whomever, and get that to Don, and they'll be working on getting, taking the, care of the outbreaks, if you will, here in the near future, this summer.
Perfect.
Okay, I knew we were down.
Question? In a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? We're out at ten oh nine.